Nancy Iannone?
Here.
Roger Smith?
Here.
Nicole Cohen?
Here.
Pat Rooney?
Here.
Joe Navarreta?
Here.
Please stand for please believe.
... to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence. Thank you. Now we have recognition of visitors and I'm going to turn that over to Mrs. Asay.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the board. I'd like to start our first recognition with the recognition for our retiring board members. We have three board members who are retiring. And for those of you who didn't enjoy, there were some cookies and refreshments in the back. You're welcome to join them. What we have for our board members is a plaque showing our appreciation, and we have a lifetime complimentary pass to any activity offered by the Lake Havasu Public Schools. So our first recognition is Mr. Roger Smith, who has served on the board for four years.[112.36][112.36](APPLAUSE).
Thank you so much. It's been a pleasure, very big pleasure to be here and with you.[135.13][135.13](APPLAUSE).
Our second recognition is Ms. Nancy Iannone, who has served on the board for eight years.[147.06][147.06](APPLAUSE).
It's been an honor.
And our third recognition is Mrs. Joe Navarreta. Mrs. Navarreta has served on the board for 24 years.[170.34][170.34](APPLAUSE).
When people put the community and our students too far along, it was a pleasure. Thank you very much.
Our next recognition is... is a word from the Government Finance Officers Association. For those of you who don't know, this is an association, it's a nonprofit professional association, that serves approximately 17,500 government finance professionals with offices in Chicago, Illinois, and Washington DC, and they also cover all of the United States and Canada. We have a certificate of award of excellence in financial reporting that has been awarded to Lake Havasu Unified School District Number One by the GFOA for its comprehensive annual financial report, which is referred to as a paper. This achievement is for the 2015 fiscal year, and it awards the areas of governmental accounting and financial reporting, and it's a team that represents a significant accomplishment by a government and its management. The award is awarded to the district, but this award is also to the individual department or agency designated as primarily responsible for preparing the award-winning paper. So this award is presented to Elaine Missy Wood, our Director of Business Services.[290.02][290.02](APPLAUSE). And this is the 27th year in a row that the district has received this award, and we anticipate, since they are behind by two years, that we'll be receiving it for this year 16 and 17 as well.[310.14][310.14](APPLAUSE). Our third area of recognition, and I see Monica from the K-12 Foundation. Do we have anybody from Division 2020? Mrs. Navarreta, you're representing...
I guess I am.
Many of you in the audience are aware that the city has participated in the Frontier Communications ABC competition, which is America's Best Cities Competition. As a part of this, the... as part of this, the Educational Foundation and the 2020 Educational Committee, or Pillar Two Education Committee, has provided opportunities to support teachers in our district for recruitment and for retention. One of the areas in retention of teachers is also to build their excellence. And so what the two committees have done is gotten together to award scholarships to teachers in our district who have been here for at least three years, who are already excellent, and who are continuing their education. And so we have this evening the opportunity to award several scholarships, and I would like to announce them and have them come up.
The friend should come up, excuse me. But she's our colleague for education, pillar number two, so she needs to come on up here as well.
I think they're in alphabetical order, so I'm going to...
Thank you.
Our first one is to Eugenia Anderson, and Eugenia is working on her, or has just finished this call, her master's in English.[421.74][421.74](APPLAUSE). The next one is to Marie Hendry.
When you guys come up, will you stay up?
Somebody's going to take a picture. And Marie is going to be pursuing her national board certification. Our next recipient is Wade Novy. Wade is pursuing his master's degree in educational leadership. Next is Valerie Rose Johnson. Valerie is pursuing her national board certification. Next is Virginia Sotner, and Virginia is not with us this evening, but she is pursuing her doctorate in educational leadership. Next is Jill C., I don't know how to pronounce Jill's name, and she's not with us either, but she is pursuing her reading endorsement so that she can read on session. Next, Shannon Williams. Shannon is pursuing her principal certificate. Next, Brian Zematell. Brian is also pursuing his principal certificate. And finally is Julie Zematell. And Julie has added her secondary certificate in biology. While they're standing here waiting to get their pictures taken, I would like to share that the committee that reviewed all of the scholarship applications, we have them by numbers. And so Shannon to me is number one, and I just, I can remember all their numbers now that I see them on the street. It's wonderful to know who they all are.
Yeah, yeah, number one.
So your letters originally said, "Dear number one, dear number two." But we did receive several applications, and it was an honor to be a part of the group that was able to award these scholarships to our staff.
Monica, do you want to come over since K-12 really is...
We actually love teachers and students. That's what our job is, to help them.
Do we have a representative here from the Lake Havasu City Education Association? Oh, there she is.
Members of the board, and first of all, last time we were here, we were still counting votes, and so I want to express thank you, thank you, and thank you for the outcome of the override. We could not have done this without everybody in this room and our community. So again, thank you. And as much as I would like to kick back and revel in this huge win of ours, the reality is, we must continue to educate on education. So, the next time we meet, the 53rd Legislative Session will be in session, and Senator Borelli, Representative Cobb, and Representative Mosley will be at work for our district by constituents. Not realizing that Senator Borelli would actually be present today when I decided to speak about this, but there are recent proposals, if you're not aware, by the Arizona Superintendent, Diane Douglas, other legislators of the state, and by Governor Ducey in his most recent State of the State address last Wednesday, on the importance of funding education in Arizona. So as a community, we need to ask our legislative five legislators to make this a priority for Arizona, and most importantly, for rural Arizona. And if you didn't know, this just then yesterday, the Arizona Department of Ed has adopted the new Arizona MAP and ELA standards. They can be found on the Arizona Department of Ed website. I checked out Hurricane. You can look at the mountain ones, but the link to the ELA ones are not available quite yet, so we will see when those are. But, thank you.
Next item is the call to the public. And at this point in the meeting, a member of the public may fill out an application to come up and speak to the board on an item that is not addressed on the calendar, but because of restrictions imposed by ARS 3843.01, any discussion brought to the board at this time, or any topic brought to the board at this time, we cannot enter into discussion except for clarification or direction to the staff. So we'll start first, I have a request by Mary Heronama.
Hello, my name is Mary Heronama, and I have been Missy Wood's assistant in the business office for the past 14 years since I started with the school district. Joining me this evening are members of Missy's team, and her coworkers, and I'm going to quick ask them to quickly introduce themselves.
I'm Ann Tate, the child nutrition supervisor.
Bonnie Bruffel, payroll manager.
Judy McClintock, tax credit.
Heidi Gray, I work in technology.
Ella Song, being in the business department, how would you see a little circle?
Patty Beazer, purchasing.
I'm the Joe Thompson secretary, and Terry Fleming secretary, but work under payroll for Missy.
We as a group wanted to take this opportunity to thank Missy for her patience, guidance, and friendship over the years. From Patty, who's worked with Missy for 16 years since Missy started with the district, to Todd, Sherry, and Christie, who recently joined the district team, we've all appreciated working with Missy and have admired her problem-solving skills, her common sense, and her never-ending desire to manage the district's funds wisely and in the most ethical manner possible. Those of us who work closely with Missy can attest that she doesn't rush into making decisions that affect the bottom line. Expenditures are made according to Arizona School District Procurement Rules and Regulations, and when there's any question, extra due diligence is done to make sure the district's students, employees, and taxpayers are getting the best value for the dollars that are spent. When Missy is given a contract or an agreement to review, she will always read the document line by line, looking for anything that might come back to harm the district in the long run. The district's attorney has often told me that she wishes all business managers would take the time and care that Missy does in evaluating situations and reviewing legal matters. And in fact, in several instances, Missy has questioned contracts that were already executed by other school districts, and has made changes that the vendors ended up permanently changing for use in the future. One example of Missy's foresight is the focus on the district's tax credit program. First, working with Jackie Taylor and now Judy McClintock, the program has grown by leaps and bounds over the years, making our district's tax credit program one of the most successful in the state of Arizona. By promoting payroll deduction at local businesses, opening the district office extra hours at the end of the year, and asking Judy to speak to organizations about the public school tax credit, the district has been able to support extracurricular clubs and activities such as athletics, the educational tour groups, kindergarten enrichment, and many more. Whenever one of the employees in our payroll and accounting department has a problem or an unusual situation arises, Missy will sit with them until a solution has been found. She also works very closely with our contracted audit firm to make sure the district is in compliance. The fact the district has maintained its A bond rating is due in large part to the district's annual audit results and the good fiscal management that has happened here. This isn't coming from us, this is coming from standard employers and movies. Missy came to the district with a good knowledge of the construction business, which enabled her to work well with several maintenance supervisors over the years. Additionally, she's learned more than she ever thought she would about food service, transportation, and operation of the warehouse. Missy has hired some very good supervisors who take a great deal of pride in their work, and they've done a very good job of managing their respective departments. There are many successful projects that Missy has overseen during her years with the district. Some of these include refinancing the last bond, the 1995 bond, which saved the taxpayers about $1 million, ongoing negotiations on the IGA with the city that has exempted the district from paying a water bill, which equals hundreds of thousands of dollars, and working with experienced consultants to put together the solar projects at the high school and the district office. Ours is one of the very few successful solar projects by an Arizona school district, and Missy's been asked to speak to several school district groups such as ASBO and the Arizona School Board Association about how the project was done and why ours worked when others didn't. Now, this is probably a little... On a personal note, I want to say that I previously worked as an assistant in a large company in Denver, Colorado. I was assistant to a president of the large company for 25 years, and I've worked with many people I admired. But I sincerely would stack Missy up against any of them. I see every day how much of herself she puts into her work, from getting all district employees whatever raise was possible, even in the very lean years, to putting together budgets when financial information was hard to come by, to continually attending classes, meetings, webinars, and whatever she needed to do to keep up to date on what was happening with school districts in Arizona. Most of all, I, along with the people standing up here, admire her poise during stressful situations. In the 14 years I've worked with Missy, I can honestly say she's never raised her voice to me or any of my coworkers, and she remains calm when it seems virtually impossible to do so. We all want Missy to know it's been our sincere pleasure to work with her, and we'll list her more than she knows. Now I'd like to open the floor up to, I believe, Heidi and Patty have some comments to leave.
Hi, Missy. I don't do public speaking, so I'm just going to talk to you, and I just feel like I'm leaning on your door, just talking to you at your desk like I usually do. I've worked with Missy for many years. Our viewpoints are usually different, but they're often complementary, and I've really come to respect her skills and her knowledge. Over the past year, I have painfully watched her bear the brunt of anger and frustration about a lot of things, most of which were beyond her control, and to borrow from Michelle Obama, while they've gone low, you've stayed high, and for that, you've earned my admiration. You have been an asset to the district, and you will be missed. And happy retirement.
This is a... I think so. A letter that I received that I'm supposed to read to Missy. To whom it may concern, I have had the pleasure of working with Missy Wood for many years. She had a great passion for public education and worked very hard to serve the Lake Havasu district. After each legislative session, she was one of the first individuals to talk to me about new laws and what she needed to do to make sure that district budgets were done correctly. Talking to her over the years, her devotion to the citizens, employees, and the students of the district was clearly evident. I will miss her and wish her the best of luck in the future. Chuck Essex, Director of Government Relations for Arizona School Board Business Officials. We ask you to join us in thanking Missy for her service to the students and the employees, and I would add the taxpayers of the Lake Havasu Unified School District.
Okay, thank you. All right. Next, we have Dr. Danny Purtle. That's going to be a hard act to follow, Dr. Purtle, but give it a shot.
Good evening, my name is Dr. Danny Purtle. A few weeks ago, I had the opportunity to address the board and the community about a very serious issue, my perceptions of racial hostility toward students of color in Lake Havasu Unified School District. At the time, my perception was based on anecdotal evidence, pure speculation. However, immediately after a story concerning my perceptions ran in the local newspaper, I was inundated with stories from other Lake Havasu residents, Caucasian, Native American, African American, Hispanic, biracial and multiracial families, who expressed similar concerns regarding racial hostility toward their family members and children in this district. I began meeting with many of those families to discuss their specific issues and concerns, and invited them to join me in making efforts to have the district pursue a plan of action or what I very often refer to as next steps. Since our last board meeting, I've had the wonderful opportunity to speak with the superintendent Asay and a couple of board members, and I want the record to reflect, they have all been extremely active and engaged in discussions with me. I personally want to acknowledge Mrs. Asay and offer her my full support to this board as well as to this district. Mrs. Asay is an honorable woman, I feel she is more than capable of fulfilling her responsibility to this district, all of our children, and to this community. As a former school district superintendent, I'm very aware of the challenges she will face, from those who hire her, other administrators, community members, teachers, students, and the list goes on and on. Please remember her success depends greatly on the support she receives to do her job, and that means allowing her to use her experience, professional and otherwise, to lead this district. I'm encouraged by her efforts thus far, and I ask that we all stand with and beside her, because I can assure you, her road down this path, especially as it pertains to race and diversity, will be extremely difficult and quite tumultuous. There are citizens in this community who might refer to me and those who support my efforts as a rabble-rouser, terms used in the 1960s to describe the likes of meaning who had fought for equality and justice, to simply be treated fairly and as an equal. There are some citizens in this community who would have us to believe there's no such thing as racial discrimination present in Lake Havasu, that there's no need for diversity training, and there's no need to seek efforts to offer diversity training, and to have a diverse teaching corps. Perhaps they've never had to explain to their children what a nigger is, and why people so often use this term in person as well as through social media to describe them. Perhaps they've never had to ask school administrators to remove racial epithets from school property, only to have those requests overlooked. Perhaps they've never had to explain to their children why people want to build a wall, or send them back to a country that they may have never even visited. Oftentimes, when people do not have to face or endure the very personal trials of others like you, they discount your reality. Well, let's just say for the sake of arguments, there's no such thing as racial discrimination and bigotry in Lake Havasu. One thing we researchers know for sure is there's a presence of what we call implicit bias. Implicit bias, what is it? These are thoughts and feelings that are implicit in anything and everything we do. We have a bias rather than being neutral. We have a presence, or a preference, or aversion to a person or group of people. Thus, we use the term implicit bias to describe when we have attitudes towards people or associate stereotypes with them without our conscious knowledge. A fairly commonplace example of this is seen in studies that show when the majority very often will associate criminality with African Americans without even realizing they're doing it. Social scientists are in the early stages of determining how to de-bias. It is clear that media and culture plays a huge role in attempting to perpetuate these stereotypes in news and popular culture. I had the great opportunity of collecting data from this school district with an effort to determine if in fact there was a presence of perhaps implicit bias and/or disproportionate disciplinary actions being given to students of color. And I provided that data with Mrs. Asay, and in hopes that she and the district will work to resolve some of our concerns. Again, I am extremely encouraged by having the opportunity to be here and speak, but I'm equally encouraged and present the challenge to you as citizens and employees of this district to make it right and safe for all of our children in this district. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, next we have Bobby Weigel, is that correct?
Hello, you guys, I'm a... Excuse me, I've been sick for a few weeks, so I'm a little jittery from medicine, so I'll do the best I can here. My family and I moved here just over a year ago from California, and before we moved here, one of my many jobs that I got, I was a police officer, and I also worked for our community college district. We had seven campuses and over 35,000 students a semester. And anytime there was a problem or an issue in our staff or students, or even if members of the public felt that they needed to speak with the president, he was always available to speak with whoever dealing with that many people. But yet, in the last year, on no less than five occasions, I've requested a meeting with the principal and can't seem to get one. And that's very concerning, that with a school of this size, there seems to be a lack of concern for parents. concern for parents when they have an issue that they want to address with the principal because nothing else is working for them. There also seems to be a huge issue of a lack of communication in the high school. I've had a few incidents with my daughter where it seems that sexual discrimination is acceptable at the high school. I've been told recently, again, boys will be boys. It's okay for boys to make sexual harassment comments and to call my daughter names which I refrain from because they're smaller children than this room, to call her and her girlfriends sexually adverse names, and it's okay because they're just boys and they're sorry that the girls' feelings are being hurt. And then if I don't like the way the school's handling that, I can feel free to take other avenues. Well, what many of you don't know is, for the college district I worked at, I handled Title IX amongst many other things. So I know what other avenues are available that I could have taken that could have been very costly for this school, because one vice principal didn't want to step up and handle it and wanted to say, "Boys will be boys," and that's okay. And that's not okay. And I've also been told, even though it was addressed on three different occasions, each and every time, it's the first time anybody's heard of it. Now, this is the second semester I've dealt with the high school where it's always, this is the first time we're hearing of this. I sat in a vice principal's office last semester and said, "I don't know if you realize, in the 90s, a great thing came out called email. If you guys are that busy, you can't walk the 25 feet to each other's offices and say, 'Hey, we have a situation. This student needs to be watched. There's a concern.'" There's a beautiful thing called email, text message, a phone call, but there's a serious breakdown in communication in the high school and a serious lack of concern, not only for the students, but for their teachers. And most recently would have been when our teachers and our students weren't allowed to sit in a classroom when it's 115 outside, because all the vice principals walked the hallways. Every hour, he walked the hallways for five minutes. He didn't sit in those classrooms with the students, he didn't sit in those classrooms with the teachers. But our teachers are expected to teach, and our students are expected to learn. My daughter has health issues. Her IEP was violated again. She's not supposed to be in temperatures over 90 degrees, but maybe it's because she's a female, since the school has made it very obvious that there's a double standard between how boys are to be treated and how girls are to be treated. And yet, principals nowhere to be found. I'm really concerned with the school this small, the communication is such an issue. And I'm really concerned for my daughter that there's a double standard between what came for her and what's acceptable for the boys. Last semester, she had to deal with the classroom and so did her female teacher, where three boys were throwing things around the classroom on a regular basis, throwing apples, throwing staplers, throwing pencils into the ceiling. The teacher would break down the crime in the classroom. My daughter would come home feeling bad for her teacher. Again, I go to the school and I'm being told, "This is the first we're hearing about it." Well, by the fourth meeting, I was a little tired of being told, "Well, this is the first we're hearing about it," and I was finally told, "Well, they're boys, so they need to be in a step program. We have to give them a step program and discipline because they're boys, and boys are expected to misbehave." My response, "My daughter's autistic and ADD. I'm going to cut her loose on the school." Because if boys are allowed to be boys in this school, my daughter's got every label to misbehave. But yet, she'll get suspension or detention if she's two minutes late to class because she's on medication for her heart causes her to have to go to the bathroom. And I'm just curious why there's such a double standard in the school, why there's a breakdown in communication in the school. Outside of Miss Festa and the school nurse, Miss Festa's been great. She seems to be the only one in this school, besides the school nurse, that actually cares about what's going on. And it's unfortunate when you have so many other administrators in the school, that it seems to fall on the same two people day after day.
I would suggest to you that our principal is right here, and if you would like, make an appointment with him right now so you can go in and see him.
You know, I knew who he was because I've seen his picture, but not because in the last year I've seen him walking the halls in the classroom or even come out of his office when I've requested these meetings, or had called for these meetings.
I think he'll meet with you if you make an appointment, right Scott? So please do that, and go ahead and talk to him about what issues you're having. Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to the action items. Approval of the consent calendar, did I get a motion?
I approve the consent calendar as presented.
Second. Terry?
Kat Rooney?
Yes.
Nancy Anoney?
Yes.
Nicole Cohen?
Yes.
Roger Smith?
Yes.
Joe Navarreder?
Yes.
Okay, we'll move into the action items. Item 5.1, addendum to the long-term lease agreement between Lake Havasu Unified School District and Arizona State University. It's recommended by the governing board that the governing board approve an addendum to the existing long-term lease agreement between Lake Havasu Unified School District Number One and the Arizona Board of Regents Four and on behalf of Arizona State University. The initial term of the lease agreement is set to expire on January 20th, 2017. If approved, the addendum will continue the lease for an additional five-year term pursuant to Article 3, Paragraph 3.2. Also included in the addendum is a clarification of the tenant's duties with the intent that the tenant will be responsible for the maintenance and repairs of the leased premises, except for the field, which will be maintained by Lake Havasu City. Designated pods under such time as the landlord's use terminates, because we have a couple of pods up in the upper section that we still have storage in. And then pursuant to Section 2.2 of the agreement and the public infrastructure required to be maintained by the landlord or city under Section 7.6 of the agreement. Tenant assumes responsibility for the condition, operation, repair, replacement, maintenance, and management of the premises during the renewal term, except as listed above, including infrastructure improvements, fencing, landscaping, sidewalks, curbs, parking lots, and walkways, drainage and irrigation, and any other area of the leased premises. All remaining terms and conditions of the agreement dated January 2012 will remain in full force and effect. A copy of the original lease and option agreement was electronically provided to the board prior to the meeting. So I would like to take a motion to approve.
Make a motion, we approve 5.1 as presented.
Second.
Okay, and do we have any questions or comments about this?
Madam President?
Yes.
How long is the renewal for? Is it an additional five years?
It's five years. Yeah. It's every five, there's a renewal.
And in the recommendation and the rationale, are there any changes that have been made to basically renewal?
It's just a little bit more specific on, there was some question about who handles what on the maintenance issues, and so I was approached by the administration of the school to, you know, try to get that cleared up a little bit, and that's why we did the addendum. So, and it was right at the time when the renewal was up, so we just did both at the same time. But it's basically, there was, in fact, there was some that, you know, the city was taking care of that they weren't really supposed to. Like, you know where the ASU monument is? That is clearly on ASU's property, or our property is right on the campus, while the city was taking care of that. And it was just, it was kind of like leftover from when we were actually doing the construction over there. So we basically ironed all of those loose ends up, and that's why we went ahead and did this at this point. Well, and the other thing is, it's, you know, it's going to be expired as of January anyway, so they wanted to get it done by the end of the year. Any other question?
Just out of curiosity, say, what are we storing in the pods?
We had some furniture and stuff that was in there. I'm not even sure if it's still there. Patty, do you know?
Yeah, it's still there. When we closed Daytona, we didn't have enough furniture. I couldn't place it in other spots, so I have the storage of the two units available till ASU says they need them. So there, I store extra furniture in there until they're requested or until I can find a use for it.
Okay, if you've ever been on the campus, you can see they kind of have that fenced off, that top section.
I go there to teach.
Right. Okay, anything else? All right, Terry?
Nancy Anoney?
Yes.
Nicole Cohen?
Yes.
Roger Smith?
Yes.
Kat Rooney?
Yes.
Joe Navarreder?
Yes.
Okay, item 5.2, approval of transfer of deed agreement for Cypress Park, 301 Cypress Drive, approximately 8.3 acres with Lake Havasu City. Okay, and so, the recommendation is that the governing board is being asked to approve the transfer of deed agreement for parcel number 10929044, which is 301 Cypress Drive, between Lake Havasu Unified School District Number One and Lake Havasu City. It is also recommended the governing board approve a resolution authorizing the district superintendent Diana Asayir to sign all documents related to the completion of this transaction. The city has identified the need to develop and improve additional areas for recreational usage and requires additional property to do so. The district recognizes the ongoing benefit to students and the community. The city and the district obtained a qualified appraiser to appraise the property, and it has been determined that the as-is simple market value is $830,000, where it has also been determined that the current gross sales potential amount is $1.25. Therefore, an amount of $1 million to be paid by the city to the district has been determined to be a fair and equitable amount and will allow the transfer of the title deed for parcel number 10929044, 301 Cypress Drive, Lake Havasu City. The proceeds will be used to pay off the loan agreement the district negotiated with Horizon Bank to construct the bus barn located at the district's office site. This loan originally required payments over 10 years. In paying this off, the district will save approximately $165,536 in interest over the next nine years. The original intergovernmental agreement with the city remains intact, and the city will continue to make payments as per the agreement. The agreement and resolution are attached for the board's review and have been approved as to form by the district's attorney and the city attorney. And I believe the, and the city has already had their meeting last week and has voted to approve this. So do I have a motion to approve?
I move.
Go ahead.
I move that we approve action item 5.2 as presented.
Second. Okay, any questions or comments on this one?
How did we get to $1 million? I'm kind of curious, because I would think that the city and the school district would take both ends of that equation and come to the middle as the point of fairness.
Okay, well, we're pretty close there, but basically what we, the actual appraisal amount is the 830.
Okay.
Okay, and this 1.250 is the highest amount of everything, all the stars align and whatever, which is really kind of high in the sky, but it's not really going to happen. Okay, so we thought that the million-dollar figure would be a fair figure, and that's, when we started our discussions about this, that's kind of what we were thinking, and the city was thinking about the same. And so when the appraisal came in at 830, that was a little low on our end, and then, you know, when we, when you read through, it's a 95-page narrative, and I don't know if you got a copy of that, but it's, yeah, thrilling reading. But if you look at it, that's basically the 1.250 is the high end that you really, it would be really hard pressed for the district to even get. And I guess, you know, the first thing on this, the million dollars really helps us in what we were trying to do, which was, number one, pay off the bus barn, so that's done. And now that money that's coming in on the IGA that we have with the city, they're still going to be paying that $50,000 a year, plus, so you've got about $300,000 in cash that's going to be coming in over the next nine years, in addition to $150,000 in kind contribution. And that's at the district's discretion. So if we are doing parking lots at one year, and you can say, "Okay, we want you to do those $50,000 worth of parking lots in this particular year." If another year, like in this particular year, we needed the cash, so we said, "You can't do the in-kind, we need cash this year." So they paid the cash. So the district has the option to do that. But once we pay this off, we'll have extra money that could be applied to, you know, our solar project if we wanted to pay that down. It's to be used really for, what was that?
Well, IGA.
IGA capital.
IGA capital, right. So we didn't, that was my question, because we didn't update the actual verbiage, so I just wanted to be, because we talked about it in the work session.
Right.
So I just wanted to be clear that any leftover money would be in an IGA capital account.
Absolutely.
So.
Right, well, that's where it's going, and that's where it's been going. So any of the payments that we get from the city, it goes in there until the due date, and then it gets paid.
And it was with the thought process of saving it so that once we're out of that five-year prepayment penalty for the solar loan, we could apply it to that.
Exactly.
So what do we owe on the bus barn at this point in a rough number?
It's like 840 something.
846.
So, so we'll have money left over from, because we have another, we have the 50 that the city gave us from this year.
And how much on the solar project?
1.2.
1.2.
Yeah. So. Okay. And this is, and it didn't really say in here, but the purpose of this is for the soccer fields. And what they're doing is not only putting in soccer fields on that site, but they're also, it's making a park. So they're going to have walking area, and it'll be landscaped nicely, they're going to, it's going to be lighted, lighted fields, they'll have bleachers, and then the adjacent property the city owns is going to be a parking lot in the lower level.
And this is, we talked about the work session, this is a, just for a school site, this is a small property.
Right, it's one of our smallest parcels.
So it was decided not to use it the last time we built a school because it's really a very small site.
It was that and also the, we had a, the demographics, yeah. There isn't, there's not a concentration of kids in that area.
How many school sites do we have left after this?
I don't know the answer to that question. Do you know, Missy?
I want to think. I want to say it's ten or nine.
Yeah.
Ten.
So we have a lot of them.
Yeah, McCullough was very generous, and we had different areas developed that the city was helping.
Yeah, the whole idea, you know, in the community was that the elementary schools are going to be the neighborhood schools, and then you're, you know, middle school and high school, obviously. We only have one site left that would be even close to being able to be a high school, and that's the one on Buena Vista. And when we looked, we looked at that at one point when we were having an increasing enrollment, but that was going to be a lot of money to excavate that property, so.
Might be better for a middle school down the road anyway.
Yeah, probably. So anyway, any other questions or comments on this one? Okay, Terry?
Nicole Cohen?
Yes.
Roger Smith?
Yes.
Kat Rooney?
Yes.
Nancy Anoney?
Yes.
Joe Navarreder?
Yes.
Okay, item 5.3, approval to secure Arizona's Master Teacher Program grant through the Arizona K-12 Center. Mr. Bar.
Madam President, joining board is recommending that the board approve our request to secure Arizona's Master Teacher Program grant through the Arizona K-12 Center. Eligible applicants may apply for up to three years of funding with one year at $100,000, year two at $85,000, and year three at $70,000. The grant would assist our district with developing and supporting our newest members of the teaching profession. Rationale, our district's newest teachers have been fit greatly from the professional development provided by the Arizona K-12 Center Professional Learning Plan. One of our district's goals is to provide teachers with meaningful professional development opportunities and to retain them. The grant would provide financial support for a three-year period at which time we can reapply for the same grant. Our district would provide identified master teachers who would work directly with beginning teachers. We would strive to develop more master teachers in our effort to build teacher leadership capacity, and we would continue to support teachers interested in entering the path to become nationally board certified. We recognize that student learning increases when a child has a high-quality teacher, and a teacher's practice improves when it is supported through a collaborative work environment that provides ongoing mentoring and coaching. Securing the aforementioned grant would assist us in improving and sustaining a high-quality professional development program for our newest teachers. professional development program for our newest teachers.
Can you do a motion to approve?
I make, I make a motion that we table 5.3 until our January meeting.
The cost?
Well, it's not due until January 30th, and we didn't really discuss this in the work session, and now that I've read through the whole, the whole contract, I have a lot of questions, so. Unless we want to just go through and, and do it all now, but-
Is there a, let me ask the question to Brad.
Okay.
Is there a timeline that is pressing at this point?
We have to submit your application, I believe it's sometime in mid-January.
January 30th, it's right in the booklet. By 4:00 PM Friday, January 30th. So we have time.
Yes, okay. All right, do I have a second? To table it? No second? Okay, well, I guess that's that. Brad, do you have any issue with tabling this, or do you rather?
No. If we feel there needs to be an open discussion, I have no problem with that. As long as we meet the deadline for submitting the application. There's been a lot of work put into this.
All right, so, well, I'm going to open the floor again to another motion then, because that one died, so we'll do it again.
I make a motion that we table this until our January meeting.
Second, okay. All right, Terry?
Roger Smith?
Yes.
Kat Rooney?
Yes.
Nancy Anoni?
Yes.
Nicole Cohen?
Yes.
Joe Navarreiter?
Yes.
Okay, 5.4, approval of new courses and class fees at Lake Havasu High School for the 2017-2018 school year. Mr. Beckler?
Madam President, members of the board, it is recommended that the governing board approve the attached list of new courses and class fee changes for 2017-2018 school year at Lake Havasu High School. And the rationale there, the classes are listed as in years past, because the classes are listed, that does not mean they will be, actually be able to take. It's, it's obviously based off of staffing and the numbers of uses of the class to make sure that we are, we have full classes and we are using our resources to the fullest.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve?
I move that we approve 5.4 as presented. Jeffrey?
Okay, any questions or comments?
When was the last time we raised fees?
We've made a couple incremental fees over the years, and, and when you look at the fees down below, they're kind of divided into two separate areas, and I'll, I'll address the one area first, and that's the CTE with the cabinet making and such. In recent years, CTE funding has been cut, and they have been fully funded upon the projects that they're walking out of the classroom with, and in the cabinet making classes, they are walking out with some, some furniture that I would not mind having in my house on display as a, hey, coffee table or whatnot. The wood that they are using is expensive, it's, it's not the, the front of Home Depot or Lowe's, it's towards the back where you go to the cedar and the cherry and, and all of that. So that's where you see the increase in that area. The second area that's on there, a majority of it is our, our science classes. They are lab classes where lab materials costs have gone up over the years. The example that I like to use, 10 years ago, in a anatomy class, they used a fetal pig, it got to be too expensive. No longer dissect fetal pig, they also dissect the cat, because that muscle, muscle structure most likely, most mirrors the human body, and you're able to see those muscle structures and, and be able to test in a lab environment in that area, just like they would in college. We had the skin cats, they're a little more expensive than if you get the cat that comes and still has fur on it. So then we went from the skin cat to the fur cat because it was cheaper, and now we've even gone a step further than that, and I don't know which animal they are too now, but they've tried to make it cheaper yet, so there are steps that are being taken. But lab fees, or lab materials are, are going up through the years, and, and we have to try to keep up with the fees and the materials to, to help our students.
Scott?
Yes.
If you had a student who could not afford, say, an advanced anatomy, and that fee is $50, how does, how does that get addressed?
We address it through our homeless liaison who is a counselor, and we are able to provide monies to students for class fees, so there is, there is an avenue for that.
This isn't new either, because when I was up there, fees were going up, and I know, and the, the issues out in the woodworking and working on automobiles, all that stuff goes up, and it would be nice if the school district covered all that, but you just can't do it. And in, on those electives, a lot of those are electives, and kids decide to take those things knowing full well. So this isn't a new phenomenon.
One of the, one other area that I'd feel to mention with this, because I know that fees are going up and there are questions of this nature, I've already, CTE is kind of in its own world, they, they have to document everything in their document, where this money is going and where it's being spent. I've texted our, one of our department chairs to give me a line item budget of where this money is going so that I can see that also. And by no means are these fees, let's, let's charge a bunch of fees and build a cache of money so that we can go out and buy something that we don't have in the classroom. We are audited on all these funds that go into certain accounts, and as we have in the past with our audits, we've done very well in making sure that we're putting money where we say we're putting it. So I have texted our department chair with that.
I have a, I have a problem, but it's, you know, it's just a psychological session with this. We have two courses here, Advanced Anatomy and Advanced Biology, that are educational courses. And it seems to me if we're going to offer those courses, we ought to find the funding to cover those fees. Now, when we start talking about CTE and some of the other things, I can understand, guy needs wood for his wood project, he needs something like that, fine. When we start talking about courses that are direct feed into a college application, I think that lays on the school board. I just want to mention it, because you'll hear that from me again.
All right, any other questions or comments? Okay, Terry?
Kat Rooney?
Yes.
Nancy Anoni?
Yes.
Nicole Cohen?
Yes.
Roger Smith?
Yes.
Joe Navarreiter?
Yes.
Item 5.5, discussion and approval of revisions to the high school calendar for the remainder of the 2016-17 school year. Gordon?
I want to ask you to pass down.
Do you want to do that, Scott?
Yeah. Okay. I'm going to go ahead and read the recommendation and the rationale, and then Superintendent Assayer is going to present a little bit before some background with this piece, and then I'll take over following that to share with you our plan. Madam President, members of the board, it is recommended that the governing board approve revisions to the high school calendar for the remainder of the 2016-2017 school year. The rationale for this, our 2015-16 audit revealed a discrepancy in the calculation of instructional minutes. These changes are being made so that mandatory instructional minutes for high school students will be met for the 20, will be met for the 2016-17 school year.
Good evening. I wanted to share that we have been dealing with this audit finding since the audit report in early November, and have been exploring several of the options. I had an opportunity to speak with one of our auditors and spend some time on the home with him actually today to clarify a couple of things, and one of the things that came up was, why are we now being audited for the four-period day versus the six-period day? In the past, our minutes had been approached that way. And basically what he shared is that the auditors that are approved by the Attorney General also submit their audits for review, and the Attorney General's office makes recommendations to them on how they could improve their processes in order to be better. And so this audit firm did receive a, what they call a guidance from the Auditor General's office, and it was a guidance saying that they needed to be looking at the minutes per period per year, or hours per period per year. And so when I asked him a little bit more about that, he said, well, we're following the ADE guidance. And so I went looking today, and I actually found on the ADE website, and I've given a copy of that website to the board, this is about the whole presentation, but this is an area that apparently is taught to auditors but isn't necessarily shared with the school sites who are creating these schedules, and it talks about how to schedule an FTE. So that would be a full-time equivalent student. And so one of the things they talk about is there's three requirements that, in, in the ARS 15901, to be a full-time student. A student has to be enrolled in at least four courses. Each of those courses need to meet for at least 123 hours, and those have to equal at least 720 instructional hours for those students for four periods. And so if not all three of those are met, they cannot be reported as an FTE. And so they actually give you how much of an FTE you can report for the number of hours. And so you can see here that for a full-time FTE, it has to be greater than or equal to 720 hours, greater than or equal to four courses, and then greater than or equal to 123 hours per course. So there, there is an allowance for the days in the schedule, it could be assembly schedules or minimum days, because there's 180 days, but there's only 123 hours required. However, it's very easy to lose track of minutes. Our audits in the past have looked at the full day, so we've actually been looking at the six-period day students, and we've always met the minimum number of minutes. So I'm not going to go through this, but I would just want you to point this out, that they look at bell schedules, they look at the calendar, they actually do a spreadsheet in Excel, and Scott's going to show you an example of that, and they go through and figure out for every period level if they meet the minimum hours, and then for each period, do they need the minimum hours? And then finally, the number of courses that the student must take to meet those hours in order to gain an FTE. So this was right off the ADE website, and it showed some examples, I'm not going to go through them all, but it was a little training, and apparently this is the information that's been out there, but hasn't necessarily been followed or audited for in the past. And so, as a result of this, we actually are short minutes for the 2015-16 school year, which is this year 2016. Our audit finding will be awarded something like this, so this is a close warning, she's not exactly written it yet, that they determined that although individual high school subjects meet the required 123 hours annually, four of these subjects would not meet the 720-hour requirement. The district counts any students in at least four subjects as a one FTE. So the question will be now that, once the audit is submitted, what will ADE do with that information that in the 16 school year, which we can no longer go back and fix, we had students who reported as a full-time FTE who may have only been a .75? One of the things that we need to be able to say, however, is that we have corrected it for 1617, and that goes a long way. I, I did go back and look, there's been speculation that we may just be told, okay, you've corrected it, there's no, no need for you to reimburse us, to the point that we may be asked to reimburse the entire amount for every student that didn't have a full-time FTE. I did go and check, and the most recent posting for an ADM audit was for Douglas School District, and they had reported students who were not a full-time FTE as a 1. FTE, you know, 20 students, and they did have to pay back $56,000. So we do know that ADE does conduct ADM audits, so the question will be, once they receive our audit findings, will they in fact do an ADM audit or not? We don't know the answer to that. So again, the question came up about how much might this cost us? It could be from nothing to a .25 FTE for all of our students who were on a four-period day that year. And so now we have a solution.
I have a question.
Yes.
How short for one student, how many minutes short were we for the one reported student FTE that was on a four-period schedule for the year? How many minutes were we short for that student?
Can I tell you hours instead? 43 hours, where's you short?
Per student?
Per student.
Wow. So 60 times 43.
60 minutes?
Because a lot of-
Or 60 minutes.
Roughly 24, 2500 minutes, I believe. I've stared at so many numbers, I've gone through this so many times, that it's, it's jaw-dropping. On the last, one of the last slides, I think, as we went through this, Jamie and I worked a lot on this together also, going through this, the, the three parameters that a class has to meet, 123 hours for the semester, no matter how many times you try to multiply 123, you don't get 720. It's mathematically possible, so the rules that are in place for, for those classes obviously need to be looked at also. We are not a lone district in this, in this at all. We asked the auditors at the time, how many other schools are you seeing this in? Obviously, the auditor cannot say, we see this in all of them, but we are seeing it in many. The only ones that they're really not seeing it in our school district that have a block schedule, which we do not. That would be, that would take a lot of training on our part for teachers, as well as really retooling the high school to be able to function in that manner. And that would be, that would be a one-to-two-year process to really research on how to implement that, and, and it's not feasible to do that by next semester to fix the problem. So we have looked at a lot of things, we've looked at taking days away, early release days, we've looked at, let's switch some days around with nighttime early releases, and, and those things. The auditor was nice enough to share with us their spreadsheet where we could actually plug the numbers in, instead of saying, you're off on your own, go ahead and fix the problem, because we do, we were going through the 2015-16 audit, we do not need to provide the numbers for the 1617, because we have not gone through that yet. So they were very kind in sharing this. I'm going to walk you through what these numbers mean on here, because looking up there, there, there needs to be quite a bit of dialogue on, on what those numbers mean. You can see on the, we'll start at the top where it says regular, early, release, nighttime, and assembly, and there's a 1 next to it. Those are all period one classes, so we are looking at really, the ones, the twos, the threes, and the fours, those are the kids that we're short minutes on that get out after fourth hour, which, if you recall the one slide, to one of the requirements is they eat four classes. We have done that. Where we fall short are, is the total number of hours that they meet in those four classes. So let's start with the regular, with, in period one. The way that you come up with the length, which is 1.08, is the number of seat hours that you give credit for. So I have to kind of scroll back and forth for this to make sense, to, to look at that. So let's, actually, let's look at, let's look at this one right here, 1.08, and there are 82 days, and this is just first semester, so if we scroll down to, to here, we are taking the minutes that we're getting credit for, and that's where we get the 1. If you multiply that by 82 days, we get 88 hours for that. Early release, release, sorry, do the same thing, you take the minutes that we get credit for, that means the seat time, and the walking to class. There's a little caveat to the walking to class on the regular, regular day, I should back up to. We get credit for walking to class from first hour to second hour, second to third, but we do not get credit walking to lunch. Even though the student walks to lunch, they eat lunch, and they're walking back to instruction, we do not get that five minutes. After lunch, when they're walking, after fourth hour, and they're walking to their fifth hour, that's where we're getting that five minutes again, and that's where throughout the year, that five minutes really kind of shot ourselves in the foot with that, and we had re-gaming that time, which is a big, big mistake. So that is first semester, that would apply. Okay, semester, Jamie and I worked on this at length today to divide this out into two sectors so that it makes sense to everybody involved. So first semester, the total instructional hours for our kids- So first semester, the total instructional hours for our kids was 379. Oh, I showed you second semester first. So the first semester, our total instructional hours is 340. With the changes that we've made, we've changed early release schedules, we've changed nighttime schedules, and then we've also increased the number of regular days. We took out assemblies, where you can see there's a zero on the number of days, and assembly is going to meet, we have taken out the two assemblies, and we're going to reallocate that time throughout our school day in another manner, because there are two assemblies that I feel really set our school culture, and that is our golden shovel assembly that kind of kicks off the school year and sets the tone for the school year, and then our prom assembly at the end of the year is crucial to us. In our assemblies, our students sit, freshmen, sophomores, juniors, and seniors as a group around the gym. On that last prom assembly, that is our seniors' last assembly, the teachers form a corridor, the seniors walk through that corridor, and there's lots of tears, there's lots of hugging, and that's a pretty cool moment for our students. Once the seniors are gone, we ceremoniously take the juniors and move them to the senior section, and they become seniors at that moment. We do the same thing with our sophomores, they walk across the gym and take their seat in their area. Freshmen slide over, and then we have that void for our incoming freshmen. So it is a big culture builder that we will build into the school day somehow, but for the instructional minutes, we have to take those out. We had to also take away a nighttime, and go back to a regular early release day, and then we also had to take, and we need to find an early release day second semester that we need to take away, and we need to be able to capture those minutes. If we put those things in place, as the stars did align somehow, some way, we are required to have 720 hours, and we come to 720.03.
Mr. Becker, please, you need to mention the start and end time.
I'm going to go through those.
I'm sorry.
You have no clue how happy Jamie and I were to put that formula into there and hit enter, and come up with that as we, the first one we came up with was 710. Then what if we take away nighttime days? Well, that only got us to 713. All right, put nighttime days back in, what if we take three early release days? Well, that only got us to 716. And it was back and forth for quite a long time. Had the auditors not shared this, this task would have been very difficult to complete, so I'm glad they did. Getting on to what this looks like second semester to gain those minutes and to change those days, keeping that in mind, is I have created what our regular schedule is right now for first semester, and what we will have to go to second semester. I do have teachers in the audience, I have waited to the point of when, if this is approved, that I will be sending out an email, so that they are not reading this in the newspaper for the first time. I had to be able to get your approval before I communicate with my staff that what we were looking at. They are well aware of the audit situation, I have shared that through an email, and I have also shared that in a staff meeting. So what this looks like, we would end up starting period 1 at 7:45, and we would get out of that class at 8:50. The numbers here that you see, this is actual seat time, and this is what we get credit for. Remember the five-minute passing period that I talked about? We do not get credit when the bell rings at 7:40, and they have five minutes to get to class. Because they are arriving at school, we do not get credit for that passing time. So when you look at second hour, we'll go from 8:55 to 9:55, there's actually 60 minutes of seat time, but this is where we get that five minutes going from period 1 to period 2, where we get 65 minutes credit for instructional hours. And then the same thing going to third period, 60 minutes again, and then we get 65 actual seat time. Here's where we lose those minutes, where we're walking to lunch, period 4 is our lunch period, we do not get those five minutes, so we had to be creative on how are we going to get them? The way that we did that, we went from three lunches to two lunches. That is going to be quite an ordeal, but I think it is palatable. We've met with Tawer and worked with them, and have gone through this. I'm also going to request and get extra support from teachers who have prep hour during that time, and come up with a stipend to pay them during that, and take half of their prep hour away, where they are able to help with the supervision in the lunchroom and such. We did create a gap between lunches, so that Tawer can keep up with the demand that is going to take place, and I will walk you through a schedule for a student, what it looks like for a student that has a first-period class, and a certain, or a first lunch, and a student that has a second lunch. Going into the afternoon, period 5 would go from 12:45 to 1:35. This class period is 55 minutes long, and we get credit for 60. But where we're trying to make up hours are those morning ones, like I stated before, with those four-period kids is where we're trying to make up hours. Superintendent Asire said, they used to come in and look at your whole schedule for the entire day. When you do that, we're, I mean, you can see up at the top, when you look even at a five-period kid, we're almost at 900 hours of instruction, so six-period kids, we're well above what we need to have for our students. So there is that part there. This is on here, because originally, we had thought we were going to have assemblies, but that would be now void. The proposed early-release schedule, we did change that also, because we wanted to keep the start time consistent, so that parents and students aren't, is this an early-release day, or is it a regular day? What time do we start this day? And keep it consistent throughout the entire semester on start times. We started 7:45, and we did extend it to 12:25, because those few days that we do have, we gained minutes there also. And that's all part of the complicated equation that we've worked through. With the nighttime schedule, we did the same thing, we started at 7:45, and we're looking at getting out at 12:25, where we gained those minutes in those morning hours by being able to increase the minutes, as you can see, from 36 to 39, 36 to 40, if you compare the two, how you approach it.
On the early-release days, then, you get that five-minute credit for every single class, so there's not a lunch that day, or?
There's no lunch that day. No lunch that day. So what does this look like on a normal day for, and we're only talking our four-period students? If they have a first lunch, you can see where they go to class, like I mentioned before, 7:45 to 8:50. Second period, they go from 8:55 to 9:55. Third period, they go from 10 o'clock to 11 o'clock. And this is a first-lunch student, so at 11 o'clock, when they're led out of that class, lunch starts at 11:05, and continues through 11:30. It's a 25-minute lunch, and that's the same amount of lunchtime that they get currently at the high school.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
I know my son Pax is on PGMJ every day, because he said it's just too long in the lines to wait for food. How are you, is that, is that untrue?
That lunch comes like that.
It's super fast.
It's so fast.
Why'd you go on?
I'm not there. Just saying.
You can visit us, Shannon.
I have extra lines, just to speed it up.
I can speak to it. They're, it's mind-blowing, to be honest, when you see that number of students come to lunch at the same time. I remember doing the same thing, borderline running, I was speedwalking so that I could get to the front of the line when I was in high school, too. But to watch the lines, and then all of a sudden, 10 minutes later, and you're like, nobody's in line getting food, and everybody has food, then you look around, and they're done eating, and they're socializing, and it's capable, and maybe that's his way of, kids and mom just still practice lunch.
Mom doesn't make it.
No, they can't make it.
They do have a long time at the end, when we watch them have lunch.
Last year for our high school also, and I can share, because we have experienced the two periods, or the two lunches, we did it the entire time, and we did the merit testing, which was the majority of the month of April, and we had no issues getting the kids through lines. Again, that hats off to their staff, because it's mind-blowing how fast they get people through those lines.
I'm sure we'll have to tweak a few things, but.
So continuing on, so once the kid is done with lunch, or the student is done with lunch at 11:30, their actual fourth-period class would start at 11:35 and go until 12:40. This is where we had to gain that five minutes, and put a gap between the starts and ends of the lunches, if you will. So the second-period student, I'm not going to bore you with talking you through periods 1, 2, 3, but when, once they leave third period, if they have second lunch, they go straight to class, and they have lunch from 11:05 to 12:10. And that's where we get those 65 minutes, and we gain that five minutes that we lost on our normal schedule for first semester. And then they would start lunch at 12:15, and go through 12:40, which is 25 minutes of a lunch period. And those four-period kids that leave, they are now off campus after that time. Question asked.
Scott, if you're the second-lunch student at 12:10, can you leave campus? You still get credit, but the school still gets credit?
Yes. Well, if I'm a four-period kid, and I want to go home, because Helen has better food in his refrigerator, and I can eat all, and that I want to continue eating more and more, and read the covers, we have students that do that currently. Kathy?
If I understand you correctly, what you had to do for next semester is you have to find those minutes for both last semester and this semester. So then, next year, your solutions won't have to be as drastic.
They will not be as drastic. And I've shared with the groups that I've presented before, I did the pouty boy and cross-my-arms stand in the corner of, how fair is this that our audit happened to come up in November, and the findings happened at that time, and they said, good luck, you have to fix it for second semester? How great would it have been had our audit been in September? And we could have addressed it at the next board meeting, hopefully, and then we would have had all that time to make up these minutes, and it wouldn't have been as drastic. It's a solution, I think it's the best solution that we've hammered out over and over. It's been painstaking, it's been a lot of drafts, go straight into the trash, let's go back to the drawing board, nope, that one didn't work, and continued over and over. But this was the saving grace of being able to plug it into what the auditors actually use.
So Scott, do you have the schedule for the next school year then?
I do not. I was tasked with, let's get a fix for second semester, let's get to Thursday and get to Christmas break, and then January, let's start working on what next school year we'll look at.
Right, okay.
And then there'll be a lot of, a lot more time to be able to sit down, to present here options to directors, and then be able to hold committees at the high school site, and then meet with board members in two separate sessions, just as we did in the past when we went and we removed 7:00 AM and went to the calendar, or the schedule that we're currently on. So there'll be a few presentations that take place through second semester, so that we're all in this together, and all the stakeholders have a say in it.
Okay.
Scott, the standard school year is 180 days?
180 days.
So if you're going to have four, four-class student, they've got to be an hour every day. That's only going to get 720. 123 is just a byproduct, right? Have that right?
And as Kathy mentioned before, next year's measures won't be this drastic, we won't, we will not be in this situation where we have to add that many.
For a four-class person, they're going to have to be in a real class every hour, every day. So that can't do, nighttime assemblies ad nauseam, unless there's some other fix, you add days or whatever.
There are. Well, adding days, that's, we'll address that, though, we haven't to this point. Our main goal was, we need to get this fixed.
Oh, no, I understand, yeah.
And the timing, it seemed very odd of, why are we doing this right now? The findings in our audit, we were presented, I believe, on October 9th, there was a work session that day, to, the deadline for to have board materials had already passed, and that next board meeting happened too quickly. This is the first board meeting that we were able to get on the agenda with a solution. So the timeframe was impressive.
So, Sunny, I'm so happy you're here, and also thankful that you've visited our schools, but this is the kind of micromanaging. So here we have arbitrary rules in place, students need 23 credits to graduate, students need a minimum of four classes at 123 hours, yet somehow, four times 123 has to make up 720 for us to get paid. And so we can add those kids to take a fifth class, but that requires us hiring more teachers and more money, or we're spending our time doing this. And so, I know you're not the ADE, but this is like a lesson in frustration that isn't actually improving education. And I absolutely know you're not the ADE, but this rule does not make any sense.
I'm with you 100%, 100%. I think this is ridiculous, that you got to joke with this joke, to satisfy somebody else overlooking this detail that you all, I believe, should have known about. I have a question, suppose an incident, an emergency incident comes up, and you have to clear the whole school out for two hours, a fire or something, emergency, you have to make that time back up, right?
Yes.
Do we have to add a day?
Unless it's lunch. Unless it's after fourth hour. If it's six. Well, you can get a waiver from the state, so you can ask for a waiver from the state.
Well, in my opinion is, that was their mistake, you should be penalized for it, and I can't imagine anybody in the House or the Senate saying, we need to punish the schools and make them pay. I don't see that happening.
As a group, tomorrow's going to be a day of, it changes people's start time for work, we need to meet with transportation for special education, because that changes bus route times. We, I need to sit with Ann to go through and really put the numbers together of who's going to what lunches, so that we don't have seven, or almost 1,000 at this lunch, and only 800 at this lunch, because that is a vast difference. They shared numbers today of how many lunches are actually sold, first period, or first lunch, second lunch, and third lunch, so those numbers are helpful on how to divide kids up to those lunches also. So that piece is there, and then there, I mean, the dominoes, one falls, and we have to start addressing those. IEPs happen during the morning hours at 7:30 till 8 o'clock usually. Well, now, we start at, our teacher's report time is 7:30, now we have 15 minutes to complete an IEP. We struggle to get through the number of IEPs, and 504 is the way it is at the high school, and now we've added another hurdle to be able to try to complete that, but we will find a solution to it, because we have to.
Question, this problem only applies to core students, right?
Correct.
How many of those do we have?
244 is the number that I believe was shared when we would audit.
Are most of them seniors, or are there a few others for certain special reasons that are allowed to do that?
I have a question. The Douglas School District that you said had to pay back ADM for 56,000, that wasn't on this issue?
No.
This was on another issue, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure.
Right. But they, their audit triggered an ADM audit.
I under, okay. But that could be for a bunch of different reasons that they were.
Yes.
I like the solution.
It's going to put a crimp in my lifestyle, but I like the solution. The question is, though, how did we get here? What broke in our system to cause us to come up short on hours? Or have we been short since I was in school?
That would be my guess.
Yes, the auditors looked for something different that they didn't used to look for.
To put it in simpler terms, when they walk into a school, in the past audits into this year, they ask for your school calendar, which is the colored school calendar that's posted on the district website that has all the early-release days on it and whatnot. They would take that, and they would take our full bell schedule. They would look at the two, they would assign the numbers into this spreadsheet based on an entire school day. And they would only use that total, which, like I stated before, is well over 900, and we're required for 720.
So we've had this issue going on 40 years now, is what we're saying.
Yes.
I know this won't cheer you up, but I would be prepared to see this again, because I've been in two other states that we went through this exact same problem. And we even had to tell some students they couldn't graduate.
Well, it seems to me like a technical change, Senator Borelli, to 15901, 1A2 would solve the whole problem. the whole problem.
Amen.
That's it. I mean, it really would solve the problem. And I just wanted to say that when I talked to our senator, he was appalled and said that he would shout from the rooftops. I also spoke with Diane Douglas, who was unaware that this was even an issue, even though this information is on her website. We've discussed many times how much information there is. So, I can't see our district being penalized for last year, but I'm glad you have a solution. But I'd like to see the statute addressed as well because you can't get 720 with four periods. And if the state is saying they don't want to see any more four-period days, that's one thing, but they need to say it. You know, they need to be clear.
I couldn't get it to work on my calculator either.
Right.
I'm thinking, is this new math from California?
Sounds like just a technical change.
But, but the important thing is for him to understand that these students taking just four periods already have almost all of their credits to graduate. They don't have to be there. Some seniors stay for six periods, but some, you know, don't, and then they go out and get jobs at noon. It works.
Similar situation happened to me when I was in my senior year.
Okay.
It wouldn't recognize a history class from Texas.
Okay, I'm going to go ahead and motion them to accept it because I don't, I think we got into the clarification, we never made a motion, so.
I make a motion, we approve 5.5 as presented.
Okay. Any other comments or questions?
Thank you.
Yeah. I would like to say that, that Mr. Becker and several of his staff members have spent hours and hours on this.
I believe that.
It has been a process, yes.
I'd like to applaud him, so thank you a second for that.
As I mentioned, it was, I was myself alone in my office, writing about this. It was, it was me, so let's put a whole bunch of ideas on how we can save minutes. Let's apply those to the formula. Those didn't work. We sat here the other night, myself, the superintendent, Brad, Jamie, and then others in the room for three hours. We left work at 5:00 that night, and the meeting started at 2:00, retooling what these calendars look like, and then go to find that there was a mistake on this that the auditors made to, on our end, we double-checked with the auditors. It was a typo, but it still, it didn't help us all too much when we had to come up with a plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Terry?
Nancy Rooney?
Yes.
Nicole Cohen?
Yes.
Roger Schmidt?
Yes.
Pat Rooney?
Yes.
Joe Navarreta?
Yes.
Okay. 5.6, award of bid for beverage vending machine services.
Hey, Madam President, members of the board, it's recommended the governing board award the bid for beverage vending machine service to Swire Coca-Cola. Coca-Cola, yes. On September 20th, the governing board did give the district permission to go out for an RFP. That was a conference. We did ask and meet with all of the principals to talk about their number of machines that they'd like, the locations and that type of thing. Then we went, we did the written RFP, and we only did receive one proposal from Swire Coca-Cola. The district's employees, Mary Huron and Auntie, conducted the evaluation, and the points were awarded accordingly. The attached copy that you have shows Swire's profit statement, which shows that 35 percent commission on each case that's sold, and the money does go into the different sites' auxiliary accounts.
Do you have a motion to approve?
I move that we approve item 5.6 as presented.
Second. Any questions or comments?
Why are, why are we only publishing RFPs in the minor? I, I understand there's a minimum statutory requirement, but why wouldn't this be published anywhere else?
It is published on our website, and also we have a bid list that we send this out to, but we actually physically have to put it into the Kingman Daily Minor.
I just, I just hear the city bid notices going into the Herald all the time, but I don't see ours.
John?
It, it did cost, I think, 600 some dollars to publish it in the Kingman paper, and I think it's almost as much in our paper. So, and we have to do it in the Kingman paper, so you're looking at over $1,000 to publish it.
Another question? Terry?
Nicole Cohen?
Yes.
Roger Schmidt?
Yes.
Pat Rooney?
Yes.
Nancy Aronony?
Yes.
Joe Navarreta?
Yes.
And John, this is on the slide, but anytime when we do those bids, people that are used to doing these types of bids always will go to the county seat to look. So, if you're used to doing those bids, that's where you're going to look. Okay. 5.7, approval to submit revision to the 2015-2016 annual financial report for Lake City Unified School District to the Arizona Department of Ed.
Hey, Madam President, members of the board, it's recommended that the governing board approve the request to submit a revised annual financial report from 1516 year to the Arizona Department of Education. The 1516 annual report was originally approved by the governing board on October 6th and has since been discovered that corrections needed to be made. There was an issue with the balance for grants, Fund 100, due to a cross-fiscal-year payroll check void and reprint for an employee. The employee received the check in the correct fiscal year, however, did not cash it, and it was thought that was cashed by the grants department. So, we are, we are going to make that correction for them. We also, we're carrying the bus barn as a course of construction, and it, it actually ended in April, but we didn't put it on our fixed assets. So we need to make sure that we get that done as well. And then we also purchased the bus with funds that were allocated to us from the JTED, and it was mistakenly thought that the bus was actually a JTED bus. It's called that all the time, but it actually resides with us. It is our asset. So we will add those two assets to our fixed assets list.
Okay. Do you have a motion to approve? About the, the board's production item 5.7 as presented? Questions or comments?
I, I only have one question. On the, on the, the original one before the bus and whatnot, my question was, so we have checks out there and we can't tell if they're not cashed before we do a balance?
Yes, we can. We knew that it wasn't, but grants, because they knew it had been reissued, thought it had been. When they did their completion report, they showed it as, we've gone through three people in that one department, and so I'm not sure that what report that that person was looking at. So we'll just accept the responsibility, but yes, it, it shows it's not cashed, but that was not the way the completion report was done. They thought, after all those months, that person probably had cashed that check, and that's what they went with.
Okay. I, I guess my point is that this would all be automatic. It would automatically show an outstanding check. It wouldn't be a user error. It would be automatic. It's, it just seems odd that somebody not cashing a check throws off our, our caffer.
I, I agree.
So, is that really a people problem or is that a?
We, we've had issues.
Software problem.
We've had issues with the county. We have not been able to ascertain our balances. And they have a new person at the county level, and so, again, we haven't been able to get exact information out of them. And so we've been working with the county treasurer's office to try to make that happen as well. So unfortunately, it's been a catch 22 because of a whole lot of new people.
Okay.
Thank you. So I agree with you, but that's not what's happening this year. Or last year. Or last year.
Terry?
Pat Rooney?
Yes.
Nancy Aronony?
Yes.
Nicole Cohen?
Yes.
Roger Schmidt?
Yes.
Joe Navarreta?
Yes.
Okay, 5.8, first presentation review of revised policy EVAA reporting of hazards and warning systems.
Yes. We recommend that the board approve the first presentation of revised policy EVAA. There are some technical changes to the language in the policy, and those were made as a result of House Bill 2190.
Do you have a motion to approve our first reading?
I move that we approve item 5.0 as presented.
Okay. Questions or comments on that? Mary Terry?
Nancy Rooney?
Yes.
Nicole Cohen?
Yes.
Roger Schmidt?
Yes.
Pat Rooney?
Yes.
Joe Navarreta?
Yes.
Item 5.9, compliance with Tax Reform Act of 1986. Look.
Madam President, members of the board, it's recommended the governing board approve and sign the attached form to be forwarded to the Mojave County Treasurer along with the copy of the district's budget. The county treasurer's office has made arrangements with Wells Fargo to register warrants for the calendar year 2017. The county treasurer has requested the governing board approve and sign the attached letter of declaration to do so for the calendar year 2017, and has also requested that the copy of the district's budget be provided to the treasurer's office. This is rather more a housekeeping type of thing. Each year, we request a line of credit just in case all of our people's taxes are not received in a timely manner or the state does not fund the payments in a timely manner. So this way, we must be in the black at the end of the year. We can't have any line of credit owing, but this just ties us over in case.
Do you have a motion?
I move that we approve 5.9 as presented.
Second. Questions or comments? Terry?
Nicole Cohen?
Yes.
Roger Schmidt?
Yes.
Pat Rooney?
Yes.
Nancy Aronony?
Yes.
Joe Navarreta?
Yes.
Item 5.10, award of bid for audit services. Sorry?
We recommend that the governing board award the bid for audit services to Heinfield, Meach, and Company. This award will cover the audit for the 1916, for the 2016-17 school year at a total cost of 46,000 and may be renewed for four subsequent years. This request for proposal was approved by the governing board on October 18th. On October 19th, the RFP was mailed to the nine auditing firms registered on the district bid list. The RFP was also placed on the district's website. Three bids were received and opened on November 21st, 2016. The bid evaluation was performed by Diana Assayer Superintendent, Missy Wood, Director of Business Services, and Mary Huronama, Administrative Assistant Business Services. The summary is as follows. Heinfield and Meach got 264 points out of 300. Clifton, Larson, Allen, 244 points out of 300. William, Doveridge, CPA, 217 points out of 300. Heinfield, Meach was awarded the bid for audit services five years ago, and their services have always been excellent. In addition to the audit services requested by the district, the firm continually offers classes and workshops on the latest topics and changes in auditing requirements. Because the district is a client, staff members are able to participate at a reduced rate. The district's comprehensive annual financial reports have been recognized for excellence by the Association of School Business Officials and the Government, Government, High Mass Officers Association. After governing board approval, the contract between the district and Heinfield, Meach must be approved by the Arizona Auditor General's Office before any audit work may begin.
Do you have a motion to approve?
I move that the governing board approve action item 5.10 as presented.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Terry?
Roger Schmidt?
Yes.
Pat Rooney?
Yes.
Nancy Aronony?
Yes.
Nicole Cohen?
Yes.
Joe Navarreta?
Yes.
Item 5.11, discussion of possible appointment of Director of Business Services.
Yes. Well, I wanted to let the board know that we did make an offer that was declined, and so we do not have a candidate to bring forward currently as our Director of Business Services. Right now, what I'm doing is, I have made contact with the Arizona Association of School Business Officials, as well as ASBA and some other individuals, and am looking for recommendations for individuals that could serve as an interim. And I am requesting that in January, that we schedule an executive session to discuss the business services position.
Right. But was a reason given for not accepting the offer?
Yes.
Can you tell us or not?
Sure. Yeah, unable to, to close out obligations and relocate to have.
We'll move on to 5.12, approval of contract for contracted occupational services with ProCare Health Services. Ms. Walter.
Madam President, members of the board, it is recommended the board approve the contract with ProCare Health, known as Hope Division, for teletherapy with an occupational therapist for 1617 school year, not to exceed $50,570. The district has been unable to fill this critical full-time occupational therapist position that was vacated as a contractor. ProCare Health is an approved vendor under the safe contract under RFP 15005. We are requesting approval to contract ProCare Health for occupational health therapy services at $72.50 per hour, or totally not to exceed $50,570. The district is obligated to ensure the provision of services for eligible students to receive a free appropriate public education for students requiring related services as required under the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act. Funds from theemineral budget will be used to pay for the services. This has been reviewed by purchasing a legal.
Okay. Do you have a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve, approve 5.12 as presented.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Terry?
Nancy Aronony?
Yes.
Nicole Cohen?
Yes.
Roger Schmidt?
Yes.
Pat Rooney?
Yes.
Joe Navarreta?
Yes.
Item 5.13, approval of purchase of contracted speech services with Soylent Health? Or Soliant? I don't know how you say that. It sounds like Soylent Green. So I don't know.
I know, really.
One question to the board.
It is recommended the board approve the purchase of contracted speech therapy with Soylent Health for the 1617 school year, not to exceed $50,220. The district has taken action to recruit qualified therapy-related services, but has had difficulty filling these openings. Soylent Health is an approved vendor as part of the safe contract, RFP 14002-5. We are requesting approval of the purchase of contracted speech therapy services for the remainder of the 1617 school year with Soylent Health at a rate not to exceed $72 per hour. The district again is obligated to provide these services under IDEA. The contract will be replaced in existing contracts. Funds from the emineral budget will be used to pay for the services, and it has been reviewed by purchasing a legal.
Okay. Do you have a motion to approve?
I move that we approve item 5.13 as presented.
Second.
Questions or comments?
This is the field to be in.
Yes, it is.
Terry?
Nicole Cohen?
Yes.
Roger Schmidt?
Yes.
Pat Rooney?
Yes.
Nancy Aronony?
Yes.
Joe Navarreta?
Yes.
Item 5.14, approval of renewal of facility use agreement between American National Red Cross and Lake City Unified School District as emergency shelter.
Madam President, members of the board, it is recommended the governing board approve the renewal of the facility use agreement between the American National Red Cross and Lake City Unified School District to use our approved school sites as emergency shelters in the event of a community emergency. The facility use agreement establishes a formal commitment between the parties outlining procedures and financial reimbursement in the event of a community emergency shelter which needs to be open using our district-approved school sites. Legal has previously approved the document as deformed. The agreement is attached for your review and will be in place until either party submits written 30-day notice. The agreement is periodically reviewed every couple of years.
Any other motion to approve?
I move that the board approve action item 5.14 as presented.
Second.
Questions or comments? Terry?
Roger Schmidt? Pat Rooney?
Yes.
Nancy Aronony?
Yes.
Nicole Cohen?
Yes.
Joe Navarreta?
Yes.
Item six point one, superintendent's report.
I have, as always, the opportunity to be grateful for the donations that our district receives. And in the monetary donations, you know, sometimes you see these things listed out individually, but I noted that for field trips at Starline, the community of Starline has donated five thousand six hundred and sixty-four dollars this last month for field trips. So, that is an amazing donation. And then the other thing I wanted to bring up is, if any of you had attended any of the events at the high school, the band has this wonderful golf cart with their Knights Band and Orchestra graphics on it. And that was a project that they completed all with community donations, and the donations totaled two thousand sixty-five dollars to refurbish that golf cart, and it looks lovely. So, we appreciate all of those businesses. I also wanted to, to give a brief update, and I will pass this out just real quickly. The, one of the things that we've been talking about with the passage of the bond is that we continue to go to the Schools and Facilities Board for those projects that are emergencies, and as we can, take advantage of that opportunity. And so, we still have several projects that are open with the School Facilities Board. But what I wanted to bring up is, we did have, we talked about, and I, I don't, I don't want to be facetious, because we talked about not having to close school and send people home. At the beginning of the year, we know that we had that high heat situation, where we also had a very cold school building then, on the opposite end of that at the high school. And discovered that there was an underground water line that broke, and the heating units wouldn't work, and the SFB responded immediately and authorized that project based on the work of our facilities person, John Simpson. Thank you, I had to think of his name. And so, that one has actually already been completed and finalized and funded. The other piece, though, that I think is important to note, is that we are still working with temporary chillers at the high school, and that is an ongoing concern, that those will hold up as we move back into the warm season. And so, I wanted, I want you to be aware that that is still an open project with the School Facilities Board.
Any other updates?
No.
We're done. How are we? I need, I need a motion to.
No, no, wait.
Oh, you want.
I want to get a little bit of time.
All right. We have one update from Roger.
It's been my pleasure to be a member of the school board. For the last four years, I've had a heck of an education, learned a lot. Some of it good, some of it bad. Worked with some excellent people. I would say we have a command master chief or a command sergeant major by the name of Terry Fleming, who's absolutely amazing. Running like a well-oiled machine. And I thank you very much for your efforts on my behalf. Missy Woods has been exceptionally helpful to me. I spent many hours in her office trying to get a handle on this convoluted school budget crap that the state puts us through. And she is always, always, always helpful. Never, ever gave me a bunch of BS. And Mary took a lot, some of my thunder away, some other things I was gonna talk about. Among the things that Mary put out, she's the prime mover to get the wellness center where you kept your insurance premiums leveled for eight years. That's unheard of in the outside world. In two thousand and three, my insurance for retirement was zero, and in two thousand and four, it was seven thousand eight hundred and forty-nine dollars and change. Click in one day. You went seven, eight years without a change, and we have had an upper recently because of an extra-heavy demand on the reserves. And that's, that's the insurance world. I'm exceptionally proud of the school system. I'm really proud to have been a part of it. And I'm gonna keep being a part of it, because I've got substitute jobs already lined up. Some in February currently, and some in April, looking for January. I think we did an outstanding job of selecting this young lady right here. Young lady, I'm seventy-five years old, so everybody's young to me. But she has made a heck of an improvement and a heck of an impression on the school system so far, in my opinion. So, I thank you so much. Joe, you've provided many, many sets of guidance, direction, help. Had me in her office before I was even in office, giving me the third degree. And I thank you for your time and your efforts and your guidance for this, this body that we have here. It's been very, very good for the body, in my opinion. We've had some issues not so good. We had a couple of ladies back in two thousand, two thousand and thirteen sit down here and say, "I wanna listen to all the kickbacks you guys are taking. No evidence. Just give me a list of your kickbacks." Bunch of crap. You know, if you have a problem, you take it to the board, and we try to solve it. You don't go out and make wild accusations in public. And the same accusations have been made for, against the finance people. Another bunch of crap. We're supposed to work harmoniously with board members and try not to dominate the board. Oh, and there's also been slander of some of our district help in town from this room. We're supposed to accept the will and majority of votes in all cases and give wholehearted support to resulting policy. We're supposed to not divulge further information that could cost district money or support or public confidence. To represent the board and the district in a manner that promotes both interest and support, not negative derogatory remarks about our help. Avoid being placed in a position of conflict of interest and refrain from using their positions for partisan gain. That's called board member ethics. Okay? So, I got a solution for some of that. This little guy right here, I'm gonna issue that to this lady around the corner. It's a glass belly button, and I hope it'll help improve her forward vision and stop being negative about this district. I move that we adjourn.
Terry?
I do need signatures from each of the board members, so please do not leave. Pat Rooney?
Yes.
Nancy Aronony?
Yes.
Nicole Cohen?
No.
Roger Schmidt?
Yes.
Joe Navarreta?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.